John, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
So it is 7:02, so I'm going to call this special town meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Clark Cotten, would you do a roll call for us?
Yes, President Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Colbert.
Here.
Mr. Handship.
Here.
Mr. Lot. Commissioner Pinoir.
President.
Administrator Carl Snyder.
President.
Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
John Hodson, Town Clerk here.
Thank you. Now we will rise to the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move on to a review of the agenda. Clark Cotten, can you put that on the screen and just go over the agenda for this evening for us?
Yeah, will do. One, call to order. Two, roll call. Three, pledge of allegiance. Four, review of agenda. Five, closed session summary, August 1st, 2023. Six, old business. A, ordinance 2023-06, seal and logo for discussion. B, ordinance 2023-07, codification for discussion. Seven, new business. A, resolution 2023-16, skid steer for vote. B, Spring Branch Drive paving RFP for vote. C, Church Street Parking Lot repaving RFP for vote. D, vendor permits for vote. E, special events permit approval for vote. It's Cruisin' on Main and FDHS Homecoming Parade. F is Phase 3 annexation for discussion. G is General Government Organization for discussion. Eight, administrative update. Nine, preliminary approval of next meeting agenda. And 10, adjournment.
Thank you. I have one change. I'm not sure how all seven of us missed it, but the property standards aren't on the ordinance. And we had said we wanted to do a little more discussing. So does anyone object if we add them to old business as item number C? Hearing no objections, we will add that. Commissioner Handship, you mentioned you had something.
Yeah, a vendor permit fee. D, can we move that to 22nd? So we can get more information on what they offer prices.
So you haven't heard more on the prices from the Green Team who are on a table listed 22nd. Are there any objections?
I'm sure I have all the information in this for next meeting.
Is there any objections? I think they have a meeting. All right, Clark Cotten, did you get those two changes?
I did.
Thank you. I will now read the closed session summary for August 1st, 2023. And there was a closed session at 5:10 under general provisions, Article 3-305B1, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Board of Commissioners proposed to go into closed session on Tuesday, August 1st, following the August special town meeting to discuss individual personalities. Motion was made by Commissioner Lot, seconded by Commissioner Handship. I'm sorry, by Commissioner Colbert and Commissioner Handship. All five of us were in attendance and voted unanimously to go into closed session. No votes were taken. The topic discussed was the town administrator position, and there are no relevant notes. We will move from there into our business agenda. Because this is a special town meeting, it doesn't say this on the agenda, but every item, you will have three minutes if you would like to comment. So public, either online or in the audience, if you want to comment, you can raise your hand online or queue up at the podium here. All right, so we'll start with ordinance 2023-06, seal and logo for discussion. So on the screen, we have all the logos. And I just put the two logos there at the top that are the new ones, are the two versions the board is deciding between. And the difference between the two of them is how the word is placed, wording is placed on the outside. The inside was voted on by residents. So Clark Cotten, do you need to read this into the record now or no?
We did it before, but I can always do it again, just to reiterate what we've already done. Ordinance 2023-06, session was regular town meeting, introduced on July 25th, 2023. It was an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, authorizing and approving a new Chapter 3, seal and logo of the town code, of ordinances establishing, defining, and describing the town's seal and logos, designating the custodian of the town's seal and logos, authorizing and prohibiting certain uses of the town's seal or a logo, and prescribing that a violation of this chapter shall be a misdemeanor and punishable by a fine not to exceed $500 or imprisonment, not to exceed 90 days or both, and generally relating to the approval and authorized use of the town's seal and logos.
Thank you. Administrator Snyder, did you have anything you want to, or do you want me to take it?
You can take it, but I'm contacting him.
Okay. So a couple of things. At the last meeting, I expressed a concern about the fine and imprisonment, and that seemed like a lot. Then it was pointed out to me, like, what if someone takes our logo and like starts printing shirts and selling them, and they're not the town? And so that that's probably why this is in here, is for that kind of occurrence. So I just wanted to share that information back with you all, because we discussed it. Also, there was a discussion last time about the 1971 logo and the town seal that the clerk uses to seal documents, and which one was accurate. And I spoke with the town attorney, or emailed with the town attorney, and he said that this seal on the bottom that the town clerk uses to certify documents is what we need. That's the seal. It's covered by something, he said it was the 12-year contractual statute of limitations, and like that's the thing to confirm that it's actually belonging to us in an official government document, and that he believes that the 1971 logo was always meant to be a logo rather than a town seal. So, and then he was, you know, trying with the Public Works and the Police, but I actually see that Better City is here. So I don't know if, Jason, you wanted to speak on the logo, the process for the input to the logo, the process for selecting the logo, all of that?
Yeah, absolutely. Can you hear me okay, Mayor and Commissioners? Okay, great. So we got, we did two public polls. The first one was to sample a wide variety of different logos from different artists, different designers. And this style was the clear winner when we did that. And so then we went back and took this, this basic template that this designer had come up with, and came up with several iterations, and, and re-sampled that. And again, the response in Upper Marlboro is just off the charts in terms of percentage of population that contributes to these polls. So it's really significant responses. Wasn't it 60-something, Mayor? I think it was 60-something responses. It's really significant. And again, the clear winner was the logo you see at the top right there with the, that has the feature of the pond, the hara, thank you, Commissioner Handship. It has the, you know, the horse, this kind of an active position, and then the historically significant buildings there that are representative of those in Upper Marlboro. So, so that was the clear consensus. We've since made one further adjustment, which is, this came to us from Larry Hans of the county. He says it shouldn't count of Upper Marlboro. It's the Town of Upper Marlboro. And so you have the two versions there. You can see the top right and middle right. And, you know, just move the, essentially move the meridian up to accommodate the different wording. But yeah, those are, those are, and I, from a personal standpoint, when I think of Upper Marlboro, I think of just this great community, this calming, that's got nature, and it's friendly and accessible, and this logo really seems to reflect that. So anything else you want me to talk about, Mayor?
Do any of the board members have questions?
No.
For Jason, who's here? Commissioner Lot, I see you're there. Do you have any questions? For Jason, Godfrey of Better City, who's here?
No, I don't have any questions. That's just me. Thanks.
I do. In the last meeting, it was brought out that one resident felt that the courthouse was offensive to blacks over time in the history of this town. It was some, a place that they did not feel equal in the eyes of law. So maybe we shouldn't have the courthouse on the scene.
I don't know if you want to talk about, Jason, about the building itself. I mean, we, everyone's kind of voted, and I understand the concern. But do you think it's the built, it's the built environment of the building that?
Yeah, I can certainly understand how someone having, you know, mixed or maybe not even positive feelings about a courthouse based on, you know, what may or may not have happened there. I think when we tested this with town people and those who made comments, they just liked that it was, it was authentic. It's organic. This is reflective of their community. And so I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't diminish the experience, the sentiments of the person who expressed that. But I, that was, I didn't hear that from any of the feedback we got.
I'm not. Sorry. It's not me to come and say that. I have him talking in front of you. I don't know. I'm sorry for looking at you. Um, you're only one person. But I think this wasn't, wasn't kind of feedback we got there. I think in the surveys, when we were asked for the, to add the horse, we were also asked to add some actual buildings that were downtown. And I think there was like a lot of emphasis on the fact that we are a courthouse town. So I do see the concern, but I don't know, I don't know, other people's thoughts.
I mean, I hear the sentiment. I recognize the concern. I think for me, courthouse is still a prominent part of the town. The courthouse, we're still the county seat. We are where the courthouse is housed. Period of, that is on the court. I think it is something that people today think of Upper Marlboro. A lot of people do think of that courthouse, whichever way that goes. That is the case. I also think that if this is the feedback from residents and designing and iterating and getting to this point in terms of wanting, you know, whatever our prominent buildings are.
If, should we take a couple of comments? Or is there more comments on this ordinance?
I do have a comment regarding retiring the original, well, the
The 1971 logo. It's there. It's on page five. Do we have the same page? You just passed it. So the text is on the previous page. It's an alignment issue while we have four logos in there.
You're saying it is, that would be retired upon passing this? If you retire it, it, that's a great deal to change right off the bat. If everything we have has that logo.
Right. So I discussed this with the town attorney, because he was like, do you have to immediately change the flag? That was never the intent of the word retired. So upon discussion, I think we should change it to phased out, because it will be that this new logo will replace everything. It's not that we're going to walk in the door on the 23rd and spend a bunch of money replacing things with a logo. It's just that as we get new things, they're going to have this logo.
I think it needs to be replaced.
Probably will need to, you know, do a replacement schedule. And we do have some beautification funds, grant funds, for, you know, doing the signs and stuff around town. So, I mean, I've been going back and forth with him on, on exact wordage, and we can have it worked out by the 22nd for, you know, legal feasibility. Yeah, I think when we pass it, then this makes the new one that the public has chosen for logo.
Two questions, Commissioner Pinoir, after you finish. Two questions, last comment. So one, in the in the summary of the ordinance, again, going back to the shall be a misdemeanor and punishable by fine not to exceed $500 for imprisonment, not to exceed 90 days. My concern was with the you know, if, if that they punish me for 90 days in prison early on.
Right, that's a little.
Yeah.
I think it's the difference, and maybe we need to put this in here, is the difference between, you know, a resident of Spring Branch Drive wanted a baseball cap with it on it. So they ordered one baseball cap with it on it versus an online business takes our logo and starts printing our logo on shirts and charging people for those shirts, and then we're not, or make shirts like Commissioner Handship is wearing, right? So that's, I think, where the difference is. And so maybe it's actually, we should have some text in here that clarifies what that difference, what do you think?
I mean, that's possible. I think it's something that we're considering a little bit more, because my concern is just mainly the enforceability of, how the offense is committed, fair is committed, you know?
Oh, because you can't, you just don't have that.
So that, that was one of, part of, main part of my concerns with that. Like, if that's the option, I'm just wondering what, what the revenue is.
I find things more reasonable.
And I think the other piece in Section 3-4, so it's about the express authorization of town court enforcement, and forgive me if we discussed it previously. About the express authorization of the town board of commissioners, no person or entity may use, authorize, or use a town seal or logo or any similar emblem. Does that mean no town, or no one who is not a town official, no one who is not in an official capacity of the town, or no person or no entity, period, without the meaning of us or whoever the board is in a majority vote?
Yeah, that's cumbersome. So.
The reason I ask is because if there are, for example, if there are things, if we're putting stationery together, if we're putting flyers together for events,
Right.
if the mayor of the town has to respond to a letter or anything of that nature, is that something where we're going to have to, are we going to be timely in doing those things? Or are we going to have to have a section in each town meeting where we're considering all of these potential requests for use of the?
I don't want to do that. I don't want to put you
Wouldn't that depend on whether they're profiting off of it?
Well, if, well, this doesn't know whether it's profiting or not. It's, the way that it's written is that every use of the town's seal has to come before the board is to be authorized.
Like every time Kyle decides that we're putting out a flyer or a graphic, that seems a bit excessive. So this is, this is the next question for the attorney to work out before 20. And along with that other piece. We ready to take public comment? All right. If you are public and you have a comment, you can come up or raise your hand. We will move on now to ordinance 2023-07.
I have a comment online.
Oh, you do. I'm sorry. I don't, didn't see them. Go ahead.
Joe Horclay?
Joe Horclay, Old Marlboro Pike. I still object to this whole, but basically you have a notary stamp that you are now calling the seal. The existing thing that you are calling a logo was the seal of Upper Marlboro. And a seal is a code of arms or other emblem used to authenticate documents so that way people could verify that yes, it did come from us or from an organization. Whereas a logo is more widely used to sort of show your support for an organization, but it does not say that you are officially, you know, it's an official document from that organization. And so I used to work for NASA. There is a NASA seal that is used on official documents, but the NASA logos are much more widely used. You know, you can get a T-shirt with the logo. You cannot get a T-shirt with the seal because the seal is strictly controlled on who is allowed to use it. And I believe other government agencies have those, those same sort of things. What you are calling a seal is a notary stamp. It is not a seal. Thank you.
Any other comments?
That's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 2023-07, codification. Clark Cotten, this is all you.
All right. Ordinance 2023-07, session regular town meeting was introduced on July 25th, 2023, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, an ordinance adopting a codification and revision of the ordinances of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Prince George's County, State of Maryland, providing for the maintenance of said code, repealing and saving from repeal certain ordinances not included therein, and other provisions of general and specific subject matter found therein, and making certain changes in previously adopted ordinances. So this is the code that has been assembled. There's been a lengthy document prepared by Munich Code of the code. It's all the ordinances that have been passed in the history of Upper Marlboro, going back to like the 80s on up till present. And we are in the process of working with Munich Code to get us a updated proof that will contain several items that we're missing in the previously prepared document for you all. So I'm hoping that Lois and her team should have something to you. Probably, I want to say, next week. Get that to you, and hopefully we can have this in time for a vote on the, the 22nd of August.
So hopefully they'll have it for us in like a week or two, because otherwise it might be a lot, yeah?
Yes, that's correct. That's what I'm working with.
So it's possible that, okay. It's possible we'll have to push to September, but we're hoping to be able to adopt or approve this in August. Is that correct?
Exactly. That is correct.
Does anyone have anything they've noticed from, I mean, I know it takes time to go through, so. Any commissioner discussion, comment?
Once we get this in a form that's a lot more manageable than what we have it in currently, I think it'll be easier for everyone to go through, and we can make adjustments based at that, you know, in the future as they come up, or as we go over, you know, each of us goes over a separate section. If we try to do this all at one time and go through what we got, it becomes very cumbersome.
I mean, I guess what you're saying is if we want to make changes to specific ordinances in the future, we can do that.
Right.
Right. Yes, these are mostly like codification levels.
These are all laws that are on the books.
They're all laws that are on the books, and they're like, Clark Cotten, can you kind of describe why they made changes, where they made changes, like what the essence of this is doing?
Well, the issue is, what the code is, basically, it's going to be electronic searchable code that if people want to search and find information about a certain topic, they can go in electronically. It will also allow them to go search those items, find out what the code, what the current ordinance is for that item. So that's the reason why we are working to do this codification. Munich Code will also have, within that electronic searchable code, will also be the charter. So the charter and the code will all be there together, managed by Munich Code. So every time you guys go and pass a certain ordinance, that ordinance will get sent to Munich Code, then a new supplement will be prepared, and then that supplement will then replace whatever has been amended or updated and move it forward. So it will always be a changing document or changing item on the website that we use going forward.
Right. In the essence of like the, why they did this too, is like they deleted stuff that's obsolete, changed wording, like all the severability clauses under each ordinance are removed because there's one general severability clause, just like it's a more efficient document. Is that a good way to describe it?
That is correct. And then what we're doing right now is because the town did, some items were done by resolution, we are working with Munich Code to make sure that items that might have been done by resolution that should have been ordinance, we're verifying to make sure that those items are, everything is there that needs to be.
And when we adopt it, that's kind of a question, is when we adopt this, everything that was a resolution that should have been an ordinance or vice versa that's in the code will get shifted to how it should be automatically when we adopt it as one? Or will we have to go through the process of like changing 35 resolutions to ordinances?
No, it should be, we're, she's working to figure that out for me. We're talking about which ones may have, you may have to go back and actually take some that were resolutions and make them into ordinances. That's what I'm waiting to find out from Munich Code for. So I'm waiting for that.
We can maybe do that at the packet, or is it going to be a three-page agenda? That's my question.
It shouldn't. I don't think it will be that way. I think they're trying to make it the easiest way possible to make sure that we can get this thing resolved. That's what they're trying to do. That's why I haven't really had much hand in it. They have what the items that they need, and they're working on it. So that's what I've been told. We have an attorney, Munich Code, who actually works with us along with our town attorney. So it's two attorneys. Lois is the lady, the point of contact at Munich Code, and then myself. So it's all of us working in conjunction to get this done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lot, all right, I just want to make sure Commissioner Lot has a chance if she has any questions.
No, Sarah, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right, shall we take public comment? I see it online here, John.
Online. Joe?
Joe Horclay, Old Marlboro Pike. Some of the, there are ordinances which have fees that were then set by resolution. And I don't know if those are the issues that you're running into or not, but I believe the ordinances themselves say that the fees can be changed through by resolution, you know, after the ordinance set what the, what was being covered by the ordinance. If that makes sense. And also, I am very happy to hear that the town charter will finally be updated because it was amended many years ago, and the link on the town's website still goes to the 2018 version of the town charter.
That's what we're working towards.
So, thank you.
And yes, that is one of the issues, so. That's being taken care of. All right. We will move on to our added item C, which is property standards. It does actually have a number with it, but. a number with it, but we'll just have a base discussion, um, if that's okay, about how we're asking um the town administrator and town clerk to draft this legislation for us to consider at the end of the month. Um, and so Commissioner Pinoy, I know you had some specific things. Do you want to go first?
I don't have anything in front of me for property standards.
Sorry, you had mentioned that there were problems with it in the past, so I don't.
Well, there was no public input in the past. That was the biggest problem. Uh, it was put forth uh without public input and I, that was one of the reasons I didn't sign it at the time. Uh. We've had, as you know, numerous times where we've written uh code violations and then they they get challenged. Uh, so we need to get more public input as we go forward with this. And decide how it's going to proceed and have clearly defined uh outcomes, shall we say. If your grass is twelve inches tall and you don't want to cut it, we will cut it. But we will have a process in which you can have the opportunity not to be fined. But we need that spelled out. That's not spelled out in this ordinance. I don't, I don't recall. And again, it should have a lot more public input.
Um, so a lot of that is spelled out, but with public input, do you feel like that us having these meetings and giving people the time to comment and like keeping track of that is adequate public input or do you think there should be some additional?
I think what happens is you if you draft it out and then make sure that everyone, every household has a copy of it, okay, which we didn't do before. Most people don't, didn't even know the ordinance existed. Okay, and they should have that ordinance delivered to their home. That's what they need to go by. This is the property standard for the Town of Upper Marlboro. And then they can look right in there and see this is what, yep, this is what it is. But they they can't do that now. Well, they can if they go, if they do the hunt and pack and search on the on the town website for it, but then again, we're not really adhering to that now anymore. Uh, I know that one of my neighbors was complaining to me before.
Um, my face is how expensive it would be to print one out for me. Oh, that's sorry, that was, um, and whether, I don't think that's in our budget, but we can, I don't know. What does everyone else think about this?
If it's on the website, isn't that sufficient? They go there for every other information we need.
But is everybody in the town on the website?
Yeah, they.
Can they and do they access the website?
They go to the library, they, you know, they. It's not feasible to print everything, all the town rules and hand them out. I just think that's too much. But there is a central location where you can go and see all that.
Well, then why do we do a welcome packet and not just hand them a card with the website on it and say, please go there?
Thanks. The other thing I'm thinking as you're talking is like accessibility, right? If I went and handed this to any one of you guys, would you read it? Like, and if you did read it, would you understand it right away? And maybe the answer is instead of handing everyone this code, create a summary of functionally what the code is doing. And then provide that out somehow where people can see it. Maybe we put something on A-frames, let people know what's happening, here's where they can get the information. Maybe we can have a graphic. I don't know. I'm looking, I'm a director to see if there's too much information and we can ask the police chief what he thinks, but maybe I'm thinking digestibility as well as you two are talking. So. Commissioner Lord, you haven't had a chance to talk.
No, I mean, I think it, I think it is important for people to have access to general uh codes governing their their town. Um, first thing I thought of too, uh, you mentioned talking about printing in our budget earlier this year, so. Nice to have. I don't know how feasible it is or if we can do it in some, it's cost effect. Sure, a welcome packet is also a nice way to meet new neighbors if they come in, you know. Come to the town, hear some things, know some information and whatnot. There's a number of ways to do it.
Um, Commissioner Lot, do you have any thoughts?
Well. I have mixed feelings about it. I think that the people should be informed. Um, maybe we do something with just like some highlights. Um, because constant contact, I know for me, I get a lot of emails, so maybe I miss the constant contact, but you know how we put stuff on people's doors and stuff like that. I think even if we don't put everything on here that we highlight some things um that we deem is important because it's such, there's so much stuff and then, you know, like give them a resource um book and kind of, well, not really a book because if we highlight things, right, we put a, put something on a flyer or and we list, you know, some highlighting points and then you send it, send it to everybody or put it on their mailbox and we have the website address that we can, the link that'll go directly to just those things. Like that area instead of them having to go through the whole town website to find anything. Just, you know, if you have a specific question, will will we be able to type in the search engine and and pull pull something up and we have a specific question without having to go through the whole thing?
Yeah, it depends on how you phrase your question. Um.
I know, I was all over the place. I'm sorry.
No, I, it's like, it's like. If you have a question about mailboxes, but the code refers to them as postal boxes and you stick in mailboxes, you're going to find nothing, right? Um, so it it can be kind of tricky to search the code. So there is some kind of user friendliness, accessibility element that needs to go into the website and I know that our town clerk um is working on that because we're due for an upgrade with our website folks. So hopefully that'll become part of it. Um. But.
Well, that sounds good, but yeah, that sounds good. I just, I really don't feel like we need to print out a whole packet that I won't loop, use, that I will probably throw away after a while. I'm just speaking as a human here. Um, because I got enough clutter, right? But I know I would definitely go to the website if I have a question or and use that as a resource more than sweeping this big old pamphlet around.
Maybe we can deploy the A-frames in the corners like we normally do and um I'm going to plug the VIR program. You all may have gotten like a flyer that's called a Very Important Resident Program and we're trying to collect everyone's email address so that we can email this out too. So we can use the address we have now and email it out. We can deploy the A-frames um and just try to maybe create a QR code linking to the document um and linking to the, there's a virtual comment box too, to give people a chance. Um, and also just the meeting dates so that they can come and share their opinions of that.
We can have hard copies at Town Hall.
Oh, that's.
Request that we're not printing forever long, but we would do.
Right.
Nowhere to go.
That makes sense. Let's hear from some residents if you guys are willing to share your input. Um, clearly we're asking for it, so um we would love to hear from you. Everyone's good.
Yvonne. Just one that um years ago, I think it's been like ten years ago, since people worked beside me, well, there was a truck driver and he drove a tow truck and he kept parking his tow truck in the driveway and he kept getting fined for it. And he started pa- parking over at the uh parking in that shopping center over there. Today, he stays still. There is a tow truck, it's in the driveway every day. Backs up to the Trinity Cemetery and that truck has, is still parking. That's like, you know, maybe they don't know that. He's there in the evenings at six-thirty and he's there moaning. And it's a rollback.
You just, I just drove through over there today and I didn't see it, so.
About six over there. Sixth house. That door. On the thoroughfare before you go down the hill.
I I know that we've been keeping, or be busy keeping the commercials without a presidential area.
That, I was going to say that, that were complete.
It looks like we have an online comment.
Yeah.
Uh, Joe Orkley, Old Marlboro Pike. Um, I don't know how you guys handle the um time periods for people to resolve things, but considering all that we have over the summer, um, I don't know if any considerations can be made for that in terms of, you know, telling someone they need to mow their lawn, but it's then bad air quality for the whole week coming up after that. Or if someone's sick or, you know, any sort of considerations for those sort of things. You know, if someone's, so. Really, I I know why it is they're not maintaining their property because there were times when I was sick and was ready to just pour round up through my whole yard. So um, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
My understanding, and we can ask she first to weigh in, is that if someone gets a notification and they call Town Hall and it's been raining all week, that we are reasonable humans with them um and don't see the violation, but we'll, we can formalize that and she, and I can talk about it. Anyone else?
We need to put the process that we use out to the public as well. So if somebody knows that their neighbor has a violation and that, and maybe they were the one that complained, uh, that a notice, you know, is given, you know, it's on the door or whatever and they know that within a certain length of time, something else must happen. And if it doesn't, you know.
Right, so that pro- the process right now that's in the ordinance is that um they have fifteen days to correct it. Um, after fifteen days, that's when the fines start occurring. Um, so there's different rules for repeat offenders. Um, I actually want to kind of return to the page and I had noted that what happens is because we have this right to appeal thing where if you get a fine, you can come to the Board of Commissioners and ask for that fine to be waived. And what happens is that creates a system of like unequal enforcement, right? So if you don't come to the board and don't ask for your fine to be waived, you're just having that and maybe you don't realize or whatever it is, but often when people come to the board, even if they're, they have a violation and are consistently having a violation, they're getting it waived. And I think there's a I'm going to say we as elected officials, right, are making a decision as to whether a voter is going to receive a fine or not. And I feel like that's problematic because of course we all don't want a fine our voter, but we also don't want the voter's neighbors to be uncomfortable and we're making this like sort of value judgment rather than something more clear. And I think that it might be better for the enforcement to take it out of our hands as a board and just go back to the county. Once we go through, you know, maybe there's a process where staff is dealing with it and then at X point just goes to the county. There's not a point to come over and ask the elected officials um to, because of the size of the town and all other things, might feel awkward about the situation.
Enforcement first.
It's always code enforcement first and and there is some level of flexibility in here because we try to be nice and friendly to people. We often know, oh, that person is older and they just had surgery and here I am sticking a green card on their box. Like, because we can know most people in town, we do try to be, code enforcement officer tries to be reasonable and the public or police department tries to be reasonable. But we also have to maintain standards. Uh, Administrator Snyder, do you feel like we have something to go on to provide a draft for the twenty?
Um, it sounds like we want feedback from the residents. Survey first to get some feedback or if we want to draft an ordinance and give survey off of that? My question, yeah.
Do you want to pay the attorney to?
Well, yeah, that's the, do we want to do an outreach first, see what people's concerns are and then draft an ordinance based off that or will we draft an ordinance and give update ordinance to get feedback off of it?
Have we received any comments on this? I can't, some of the comments in our little comment box. I know a handful have, have commented previously, but influx of those, can we? And we're asking people to fill the comment box and comment.
Yeah.
I'm feeling a whole piece of survey.
I will tell you that I have, you know, sent out my kind of like, hey, guys, you got any thoughts on property standards? Can you stick them in the box? And that's the part of how we, you know, get so much responsiveness is that and the A-frames and we really haven't had response. I think I think people generally, other than like tall grass and weeds and that kind of thing, feel like it's okay. But there are, you know, residents who come in. There was a resident who came in today to complain that there's a basketball who's in the public right of way. So um it it's, and that's a balance because, you know, kids are going to want to play basketball and, you know, people who don't have kids are going to not always like that. So we have to find a balance for that. Um, and I think we have to figure out something that works for more people because we know that our demographics include like a hundred and twenty-ish kids under eighteen. So we have to, you know, serve those families of parents of those children. You, if you want to comment or?
Yvonne, yeah. Um, that basketball happened in this fall drive in front of his mailbox and we're in the cul-de-sac and nobody turns anywhere but in my drive to turn around. They don't go any further. And it's only this light. And you know, they'll just pull it back. I'll tell them another plane, I'm working to come and both pull it back in the yard. Child visiting our state.
It's like a thing, it's a. All right. Um, okay, so. Probably feel like we're good? Okay. So we'll, yeah. Okay. If we, if we're not ready at the end of the month, we can keep discussing. Um, all right, so we're going to move on to new business resolution twenty twenty-three sixteen skid steer. Um, need to be read into the record.
Yeah.
Please, Clark Cosen.
Yep, resolution, resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen session special town meeting date dated August eighth, twenty twenty-three. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to authorize the purchase of a bobcat skid steer loader.
Okay. Hold on. Nope. No, we didn't add a D to the old business.
We added B.
B, what then?
We, we removed, we removed that. I don't know. That's not, that was never discussed as any of the business. We need, sorry, we need to, um, have Director Bond speak about the topic. All right. This is. All right. Director Bond, can you explain to us about this vehicle?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, the item that we're discussing now is a twenty seventeen, uh, Bobcat S five fifty skid steer. Um, this one in particular is used, um, as less than two hundred hours only. Um, it's gonna come with a seventy, seventy-two inch bucket, a sweeper with a dump bucket so that we can try to do the streets early in the mornings. More foot forks and a six-month warranty. The price, um, for this skid steer with the attachments is fifty-two thousand, three seventy-six. Um, budgeted was ninety-two thousand, spread over four years. Um, which is a savings to the town of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars for a low-end machine. Um, this will be financed through tax exempt leasing and I will field any questions that anyone has.
Is this something you usually rent now? Like if you need it or?
Yes, it's rented is rent expense.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Rent it for the sandbag.
So pay for stuff in a couple of years?
With as much as we would use it, yes.
This is also kind of triggered by the OSHA thing too. I don't know if we wanna talk about that.
Yeah, we had, um, a set of forks that you buy for like household tractors and things of that nature that we purchased just to help us smooth things around the yard. Um, we got a surprise visit by OSHA and they didn't like that very much and eat that thing for it. So with this, this will completely put us in compliance as far as that's.
All the other PTA equipment now, we got household. It makes sense.
Thank you.
Questions for Director Bond from any of the boards? You can go back. I'm gonna watch. Thank you. Um, all right, we will take public comment. I don't see any public comment. Do you, John?
No, no public comment here.
All right. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen skid steer?
So moved. Second.
All right. Clerk Hostin, would you call the roll for us, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Culver. Commissioner Hansett. Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyar.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, we'll move on to the next item, which is Spring Branch Drive paving RFP. Um, I guess I have to ask Director Bond to come off, not go watch again and talk to us about this. Um, with RFPs, we don't do an actual resolution. Um, we just approve them, but we do need a board vote before we can put them out. So that's why.
All right. Hello again. Um, that's a little hard for me to see. So just speaking on the topic in general. Um, as of right now, Spring Branch Drive is probably the most affordable and most shovel-ready project at Fall County. Um, there's a good portion of the backstretch that was redone by the WSC in two phases, um, due to the warming breaks. And for that, which would be a potential savings to us, that would just be seal coated to batch the rest that would be paved, uh, perched, perched on and going to each end of that backstretch. Um, there's also discussion of packing in speed bump, um, due to, uh, question of residents along the street. All right, and it's the actual.
We'll let, yeah, we'll let, we'll let.
Absolutely. Uh, so this is a quick overview. The RFP is one page for this. Uh, this is fairly simple project and attached to it are the plans drawn up by me and Hunt. So that's for them to reference. Um, we're probably gonna send out some updated plans with, um, a bit less paving done. Um, and expanding that where WSC is made prepared. So they're dealing a bit less or prepared to pave with a little bit of updating. Um, but overall, we're looking for firms to come out and submit, um, requests for proposals. They're due Thursday, September seventh. There's contact information on there if they have any additional comp or questions, um, where they submit their proposal. But this is a standard RFP. So we'll post that on the town side, a little social media and the Facebook as well.
And yeah, if you know Spring Branch Drive, as you come down into the cul-de-sac, hit section that has clearly been repaved recently. And you keep going on that section before you get to the other kind of rounded area. So that's the section that would be seal coded, um, while the rest of it would, which has cracked and grass grown out of it and all that will be ground down and, um, resurfaced. And this project is funded out of, um, the state Bonville that, or not Bonville, what it's explained.
It's a capital grant.
Capital grant from Senator Peters several years. Look, have any comments, questions?
Let, uh, address the ruts that are in that road and, uh, how do we keep that from happening again? Uh, is there an issue that creates that? Can we resurface it if we're gonna still have the rut? And we'll watch for you over there.
Yeah, as far as the rust going in the inside, I think we know what you're talking about. When they resurface it, they wanna take out the existing layer of asphalt, um, a feet down to, um, two, three inches, which will lead to that, that is supposed to be completely. Yes, we will take care of the rust. And they also did, they had an engineer come by with a son of a truck. Somehow they missed, uh, one portion, which is a problem we have here. But they say that the rest of the road is in pretty good shape and there shouldn't be anything like sinkholes or anything. We hope that. But in order to, you know, sort of spend the longevity of the road, we need to think about seal coating it periodically.
I don't think anything's been done to it since it was late.
Well, yeah.
And that's thirty, forty years ago.
And that's kind of how things were going. Um, the other thing, and I'm just gonna kind of say this to the room, is when we increase the impervious surface on our properties by adding outbuildings, et cetera, we're also increasing the amount of water that's running on and under the street. So that's why the county has those regulations. So we as residents need to think about that too. And there's a couple of programs that can help us manage more stormwater on our properties. So if you're interested in that, there's like rebate, rain check rebates and et cetera. Um, that would definitely, I think, help with road, the longevity of roads if we have less water coming off. My, my tree hooker moment for y'all. Great. Are we ready to vote on this?
I have a comment.
There's a hand online.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Joe Orkley, Old Marlboro Pike. I believe that the, the main stretch there was redone about twelve years ago. Um, the town put up half the money, the homeowners association put up the other half. Um, and I don't remember, I don't remember if the HOA or if the town of Upper Marlboro, um, was the one who actually did the RFP for it though.
Um. Yeah, there's no, there's no HOA in Spring Branch.
I think it may have been the town. I, I was telling, oh, this is Spring Branch. I'm sorry. Okay. I was thinking Marlboro Town.
You're thinking Marlboro Drive.
Yep, sorry.
Um, so, uh, Clerk Hostin, I know how you need to notate this, but Commissioner Hansett just had a family emergency and needed to leave. Uh, but we do still have a court. So. All right. Um, is there a motion to approve the Spring Branch Drive paving RFP for publication?
Second.
That would be, that, that, so Clerk Hostin, that's, Commissioner Penoyar made the motion, Commissioner Culver seconded it. Okay.
Very well.
You, you can call the roll.
All right. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Culver.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyar.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Um, we will go on to the Church Street parking lot improvement. And I'm actually gonna send this over to Administrator Snyder, I think, because he's been working with this for a grant.
Thank you, Mayor. So this project is actually funded by, um, two grants that we got from the state level. One is the Bonville. We initially were issued for the old stone building and then had to repurpose it when the county did not give us the old stone building. And then the other part of it is coming out of a recent Bonville for parking upgrades for downtown. So this is a fully state-funded project. Currently, the town's owned this Church Street parking lot for a couple of decades now. Uh, it's been a gravel lot. We've been doing some, uh, permit parking there that's tapered off, um, recently in the past couple of years. And back in twenty seventeen, I think we opened it for public parking, put a kiosk at the site so people could pay for parking. However, because of straddle and kind of unkept, people don't seem to like to park there. So we're looking to improve it by paving it, hopefully with as much permeable as we can. Installation of a rain garden to, uh, stay in compliance with county regulations because of, I think, consider the gravel right now is, is permeable. So we have to work with them as much as possible. Um, another big thing we wanna do there is installation of lighting, uh, for security reasons. And one thing we're highlighting is the, uh, LED lighting that has the option for motion sensors and auto, uh, dimming. So if there's no one in the lot, it'll be at fifty percent capacity for the light. And as soon as the motion sensor spins, it'll kick on. That way it's not drawing too much power as well as, uh, not ruining the ambiance of the neighborhood there. That's kind of two big ones as well as having the contractor plan ahead and he look for, uh, charging stations for electric vehicles as well as possible solar canopies that we're working on some grants for. So solar canopies over top of parking lots, people park under the solar canopies to generate some additional revenue there. There's a lot of state programs, so we're hoping to take advantage of that. So just having the contractor think ahead, running some conduit. Um, and if, before the process is done, perhaps we can get those, uh, panels installed. That'd be great. Um, so we're just putting RFP out. We're not completely sure what we're gonna be able to get, um, out of all that. It may come in and we may just be able to pave it and be limited in what we can do, but we're, that's kind of our wish list. And we're gonna, um, see what the contractors can come up with. We've been talking to some of the in-town vendors as well, so we're excited. Hopefully we can, uh, get to the town as we move forward. Um, the budget's there, the timeline's there, and if anyone has any questions, there's contact info as well. I can answer any questions.
We have questions for?
I had a resident express concern to me today about having the rain garden in the center. If it collects, uh, the water, the water stands, we have those little critters that we don't like. How are we going to control that?
So the rain garden, I think the thought is it would, uh, have the pipe that goes out to the back to drop into the wetland back there, um, would be where we funnel it.
Yeah, because the mosquitoes could get relative.
Yeah, in there. So I think hopefully, I'm not completely sure how they deal them and if I'm sure the water hopefully sinks very quickly. But if it overflows, the overflow pipe will bring it to the back behind there.
Yes, that we be mindful of that.
Did you want, Director Bond and I were just, just learning about rain gardens earlier. Did you wanna comment on how the, those are engineered?
Well, Kyle said was absolutely correct. Um, most of this will certainly level or enter a very much pipe that runs, runs out and you take it out to, uh, well, there's a small trick to that.
It's full of mosquitoes anyway.
I've got a question.
Oh, you can come on up.
I'm Deborah Stevenson. I live on Valley Lane. I want to know what are you all gonna do with the rain when it gets so much rain, certain amount of day, it blocks us back there? And the water can really come up to here, five, six feet where there's no path. And the, the rain is washing the road. We have these really big bad dips to take a car up. I mean, I know, I know to travel through there slowly, but not everyone will do it. It's just, I'm, that's a real big concern.
I'm gonna put a pin in this because it's not the topic we're talking about, but, um, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it when we get to administrative updates. Okay, thank you. Um, all right. So do I have a motion to approve the?
I have, uh, I have a comment. Apologies. The clerk, I?
You're fine. I'm fine.
So Joe Orkley, Old Marlboro Pike. Um, I, I don't know what the current policy is on the town parking lot. Uh, in the past, they had tried using it mostly for monthly and quarterly parking for the business owners to try to free up parking, um, on Main Street for actual patrons of the businesses. Um, and so not a whole lot of money was put into, you know, making major improvements on it because it was supposed to specifically be low-cost parking. But if this is being funded with grants, that's not as big of a deal. Um, also, um, although you are still gonna want power potentially for lighting purposes, there already are some two-hundred-and-twenty volt drops. There's one Administrator Snyder many years ago. Um, but I can point them out again if needed. Thank you. And, and that was for a, for level two charging of vehicles. I think they're L-five thirties.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for the history, but can we just figure out if we wanna do the project or not at this point?
Right. So we're, we're getting ready to vote on it. I'm sorry, Commissioner Lot, I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
Is there, is there a motion to approve Church Street Parking Lot, repairing RFP and put that out for bid?
So moved.
Carl's got in there first, so we're gonna give him a so moved and you the second. Um, Clerk Hostin, do you wanna call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Culver.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Penoyar.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
My, my reception is really bad. I, um, yes, aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we are skipping over the vendor permit fees while, um, Commissioner Hansett waits for Green Team to have a meeting, which I think they're doing soon. Um, and we will move on to special event permit approval. I think this is you.
Yeah.
Administrator Snyder, thank you.
Uh, the town has received two special man applications. One for the Marlboro Fire Department for the Crusade Main Street Car Show coming up at the end of the month. They were unsure if they were gonna do it or not after Jeff Waddle's pass away, but they're gonna try it this year and see how it goes and it continues, um, for future years. So we'll see how it goes. I know Director Bond and Sergeant Erby attended their planning meeting tonight.
And have coaches shut up, so they had to leave.
So they may have a bit more insight, but we're kind of looking at it as normal for that. So that's a for. So they may have a bit more insight, but we're kind of looking at it as normal for that. So that's a for approval as well as, um, uh, the one it is.
Frederick Douglass.
Sorry. Uh, put in there for their annual homecoming parade down Main Street. Um, they just put it in way ahead of time, but that's not until, uh, October, so.
We did ask them to do that, so we appreciate them doing that.
So we appreciate, yeah, the heads up. Those are the two applications for, uh, if that don't see anything different or crazy about them, um, I can take any questions.
Do they have a permit to close roads?
Uh, Marlboro, the Main Street one does. Um, the other one is, uh, going to get it after we approve. Highway.
We just make our legal contingent.
Contingent job, yeah.
Then we, we put that in the package when someone wants it. We did that deliberately so that we didn't have to deal with closing the road.
Okay, any other questions, comments, public? All right, um, nothing online? Okay.
No.
So let me see if I, I phrase this, watch my phrasing, make sure I get it right. Is there a motion to approve special event permits for cruising on Main and the Frederick Douglass High School homecoming parade contingent on their approvals to close the road by S H A?
So moved.
Okay, we'll give Commissioner Penoyer the motion and Commissioner Lot the second. Clerk Coats, can you call the roll for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you.
We will move on to Phase Three annexation. Um, this turned into a board discussion, uh, rather than a vote. This is just kind of me giving up an update, you all kind of giving me some feedback as we get close to finalizing agreements to get this annexation through. Um, and Administrator Snyder, I don't know if you want to jump in at any point, but I know it's been both of us going back and forth with the lawyer and the, um, folks. So in the annexation area, we did kind of put out feelers to see who would be interested in annexation. Um, and we had, I think it's three different properties that have come into like, we would be interested, but we would like some considerations before we sign in. Um, and so we've been working with the lawyer to say like, okay, having these properties sign in helps us secure the annexation because we need 25% of voters and 25% of property value over there. Um, but obviously we don't want to give away our tax income either, right? Um, because we will be providing some services over there. A lot of the areas are commercial, right, or industrial, and so we're not providing all the services over there. The agreements are generally, like to kind of generalize them, they're like, the first year there would be, they would pay the differential taxes, which clarified everyone, the county tax rate is $1 per $100 of assessed value. We as residents, we pay 93 cents per $100 of assessed value. So there's this difference. So the first year we would get kind of the differential, so we would get something. Then the second year we would get a certain percentage, um, more, you know, of the taxes. Third, fourth, so that by the fifth year, we're getting 100% of tax revenue from the, from the property owners, and everything is normal, and we've been able to get our annexation through. Um, otherwise, we're looking at, you know, not having the annexation, not being able to get the sidewalks out there, not being able to extend Main Street and, you know, deal with stormwater issues and safety issues that we want to deal with. Looking for y'all's kind of, that sounds reasonable to me. I, the lawyer has driven a hard bargain for us, so I appreciate that about her. Um.
How large are these properties?
They vary in size, um.
Are they all commercial?
There's commercial and industrial. Um, the one that's, oh, there are two residents. There's residences that are kind of special cases, and because they're individuals, we can talk about that more when we get there. Free commercial? Oh, because the, you watched, because the other one.
That's the, uh, next one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, gotcha.
They vary around a couple hundred thousand.
And the, the, a big thing is like a lot of the properties under, over there just need improvement. And so the, the people who own them want to invest in improving the property, and so they're kind of like, if we have to pay taxes right now, then we can't do these improvements. Um, we've talked to them about expanding our facade improvement program out so that we can help with that.
How does those properties change ownership?
Then the agreement is no longer valid, and the new owners pay for taxes.
Personally, I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable. I mean, I wish to do so.
How many residents does this bring into the town?
Registered voters, so.
Oh, right.
About 45 registered, but obviously.
We don't know the num, yeah, because there are kids too, so maybe not enough to get us Main Street Maryland designation. If that's what you, why you're asking. Um, but I think we have to be careful and slow. Like, if we annex a huge area right away, we're going to stress our government services, so. I want Main Street Maryland designation. Just have to take it one step at a time.
Do, do we have a map of this area? Just this area?
Uh, it's pretty much the same as, it's Phase Three.
Yes.
From last time. We're not really deviating from that at all.
With different residents.
Additional on top of the consent that's around, uh, this is, we're adding additional consent to. So now I'm running through a lot, a, uh, hopefully I can pull those together of all properties, um, we're running, kind of run with that stat to get all the updated, certain figures after July, so.
And then we'll have to get new voting information. We have one little area that's on the fence, make it tucked in.
We've validated, we're in the process of validating that would be coming into the town, validating their address, their property line parcels, all of this. To make sure that we're talking to the right people.
I have physically seen every property. I have gone, Commissioner Colbert has come with me at times, um, to talk to people. We, we have talked to many people as we can, people who are willing to talk about it. There are people who don't want to be annexed. And there are less of them than people who want to be annexed, and one of these things where everybody can't have want at the same time. And it's, I know that's hard, so. So that's just in, information for you guys, and hopefully we'll have more at the end. Looks like we might have Church Street, you know, opening up by tomorrow morning?
Still no tech though.
Oh, I thought that was there.
Lord.
Yes, so.
Okay.
And no E T A, so you have to go in, please.
Okay.
Do I have power on Valley Lane?
You don't have power?
I don't know. I think.
Oh, yes.
Oh, I have power. I don't know if you and I have the same cables. Yeah, the church has power, I have power.
The church has power, so you should.
If you don't, you have my number if you don't, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, so we're going to move on to, uh, Item Three, general government.
Item Order.
Um, oh, sorry, yes?
Have a comment online.
Okay.
Uh, Joe or Clay Old Marlboro Pike, I was just wondering if anyone asked for any considerations about existing ordinances? Because I, I don't remember how many of them are worded. Some of them may be limited to certain regions of town as opposed to the whole town. But there's stuff like what hours you're allowed to operate, um, if you're allowed to have large vehicles stored overnight on the property and stuff like that that may affect some of the more industrial businesses.
Um, I think that's like just a, a zoning issue, and there is, there is, in our property standards, the zones are wrong because they're old zones from the county, so that's kind of sort of a technical thing that we will be addressing in the property standards anyway.
Yeah, I don't.
These are those, uh, our businesses coming, that, uh, 24 hour businesses coming in, so that's something we'll have to look at, uh, the licensing. So, um, now, granted, it's just the gas stations.
Um, we have a resident here.
I'm the first branch. I'm speaking for Marlboro. Um, I understand that in 19, 2019, that the move did sound in the agreement of the state that they wanted to be annexed. When your letter was sent in, it was given to us at a meeting, and I'm assuming that Rockland was the one that Rock automatically walked through it. Doesn't make the decision. Or does. They want to know what they're going to get out of it, and they'd like to see who decides then as being annexed.
Board wants to meet with me, um.
I met with the board last week.
I know, I was there.
And I told you who was going to be annexed.
Yes, and.
Yeah, how it's going to be annexed.
Exactly. I'm still arguing. Me again tomorrow night, I just wanted to see what else we could tell them that they were going to get. I keep telling them, okay, don't do it. Don't fuss when you hit with the tax.
Right, so the move slash has a good deal because they're, they're not, not profit, they're a nonprofit. So instead of saying you're going to ramp up to taxes, the deal was you're not going to pay any taxes for five years. No one else is getting that deal. And. No town taxes, yeah. Yeah, they'll pay, they have to pay county taxes, yeah. We can't control the county taxes. Um, no one else is getting that deal, so. Um, you know, there is, obviously our police services are going to be over there. Our public works guys drop their plows when they go by roads that aren't town roads. They don't, they won't, we do not plow private lots, no.
And we, I, we discussed that at the meeting.
So, um, I've, there's a lot of, people are starting to see the benefit of the general government as well, like, you know, things like the sidewalks over there, things like, um, getting the crosswalks, restripes, getting this money coming in to fund stuff. This is general government stuff, and I know it's hard for people to see how that benefits them until it benefits them. You know, there's facade improvement money, all that kind of thing, um, and it will become available.
And I, I ain't going to tell them about the sidewalk and the stormwater, but I did tell them that for five years that they weren't paying. They had never, the board that we met, she met first, you know, most, actually the second, you know, had to.
So we can talk more, um.
They asked them to come tonight. Nobody wanted to come.
Yeah, we can do the negotiations, sort of, you can schedule those through Kyle, um, or myself to talk.
We have a standing, do, do, we have a signed group, agreement, R P. Do you guys need a copy of that or?
No, they have a copy. They had, they had it when, you had it when I was there.
Um.
Rockland wasn't in the meeting.
So we'll work more of this offline, but definitely communicate to Kyle if they would like to schedule a meeting. We can have the attorney there and. Hi, um.
I also expressed that one of the big things I want to do is partner with them. We always would like space for a farmer's market. They would like a farmer's market. Nothing's easier than their partner. And partnering with the town is, is a big thing. I'd like to see them do that more often. And they were very agreeable to that. But the farmer's market was a big topic.
Okay.
Because that's something that we would like to see from, you know, summer, all summer long and through the fall. Uh, and having it at the, um, downtown isn't always conducive.
We can work those details out offline. So I want to go on to the next topic. Um, so what, before we kind of talk about our next topic of general government organization, I would like to give the floor to our town administrator. He has an announcement to make. Sorry, it makes, it's part of why we're doing this, so.
Um, so I, uh, after just about eight years serving for the town, I, I've taken on a new job, um, much closer to home. So it was a hard decision to make. I'll try to every moment I have here, come to Marlboro. Um, my last day is the 23rd. I'm actively working on the, uh, getting everything nailed down for my departure, making sure the town's all set up, and they know if they have any questions. Where to reach me, and I already had approval from the new mayor to call as much as possible since the town helped them in the past, uh, so that's good. So you guys always. Um, I just appreciate that. Or ice cream, playgrounds. That, I'm sorry, now I'm going to drop all the phones down.
Thanks for keeping it light, because I almost actually started crying this time. Um, so we're really sad that Kyle is leaving. Um, he has been kind of what has driven sort of this town into this modernization where we have all these ordinances and we're looking at, um, you know, codification, and we have all these projects. This, um, money coming in from the state to do the playground, and he is, you know, the roads downtown, the sidewalks, all Kyle's doing the work. He does a lot, and we are really. Um, but thinking about how we're transitioning, to move on to that, um, we kind of took out all the, um, general government job descriptions because kind of the history of, uh, our town administrator is that the town had a town clerk, and then they hired a deputy clerk, and that was Kyle. Um, and very quickly, he, it was realized that he could do a lot more. So a new position was kind of created for him. And somehow the, like, management of government still got kind of left under the town clerk's office. And so if you look at, uh, the job description for the town administrator, they don't really have like the same level of supervisory. Um, so kind of the, the thing we talked about internally, like how to make it work, kind of what we have is, um, we have our town administrator, and he's supervising the rest of the office. So we've got the town clerk. We have, we have someone who is a deputy clerk, but really winds up performing a lot of administrative assistant functions because that's what the town needs. Um, so moving that person to kind of full administrative assistant, and then we have a bookkeeper. Um, and then we have our town clerk, who very competently handles all of the town clerking issues, but needs more time, um, in his schedule to handle certain things. So this sort of creates this situation where nobody has two job titles. Um, and the town administrator has the supervisory capacity that should have gone with that job. So I'm going to kind of tell you, because we talked a little about this today, but if you look in the town clerk job description, the top three things are all sort of town administrator functions, like the budget, the personnel, um, and directing the work of the town office. Those are town administrator functions. And they were being done by our town clerk, and our town clerk helps with these, and we appreciate him. Um, it's just, these are, really should be functions of town administrator. Um, because the town needing an administrative assistant, our deputy clerk has shifted to providing a lot of administrative assistance to the town hall, to a director. to our director of public works, to our, um, chief of police, because that need is there. Uh, and then our bookkeeper is on board and she is very competently handling all our financials in the absence of a director of finance, which has kind of shifted from. Um, so I'm recommending that we change those to be like one, one job for, uh, our administrative assistant and for our bookkeeper and making sure that the, the town administrator has a supervisory level that they ought. So. Input on how our government.
I like to just interject here, this is Commissioner La, and just say that as far as our charter that we were given when we started our, um, our term, uh, in office, the charter, even though I guess, I don't know what the job description said because that was never shared with us. But the charter, the way the structure was set up in the charter was that the town, everybody reported to the town clerk, um, including the chief, the, um, director bonds. Everybody reported to the, to the, uh, sorry, I didn't say clerk. I meant to say the town administrator. So now that you've kind of changed things, I, I, I think that it, it, it's kind of like you're trying, you're putting it back to what the charter actually says, except for you've made everybody else a department head. Um, and then everybody, and then the, the clerk, the, the bookkeeper and the, um, the clerk, the bookkeeper and the deputy is, is, is that title still going to be, I'm flopping around here. Are we still having a deputy clerk or is it an administrator? Because is that person getting paid as an administrator or a deputy clerk? I mean, so those are questions that I personally would have. And, um, and then we need clarification because what we, what we have as far as the charter, the way it states, the way the charter is written, it's written as Kyle's position governed everybody. And if that's not what we're doing, then, then everybody's job title kind of gets modified a little bit.
Kyle, can, it doesn't say that in the charter, does it?
Uh, it does, it does. I have the original charter thingy that was provided to us when we first took office. And the way it, it is, um, and I'm on vacation right now because if I wasn't, I would be able to show you to you. But what I have in the notebook that was provided to me from the town, the structure it's set, the way I'm stating.
The organizational chart.
So the, there's an organizational chart that we approved as a budget ordinance, but you and I talked about that, Kyle, to make sure it wasn't compliant.
Sorry, there's a charter change in, that was when we added the position of town administrator. Um, but I think there's also some discussion on the, uh, work chart that was adopted by resolution. I think that's more toward what Commissioner was talking about, I think.
Yeah, that, the organizational chart that was adopted by resolution. So we adopted a different work chart with the budget, uh, and we discussed that. Um, and.
Right, so what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is in the original, it made the town clerk the supervisor. I mean, not the town clerk, you know, I'm talking about the administrator was the supervisor. Now, what you're saying now today is that the administrator will be in the supervisory role, but they were already in there. It was already, it was already like that, is what I'm saying. Except for now it's less people that the person would have, you know, would have reporting to them. But it's still basically the same thing.
The job description is reflecting how the, like, basically the town administrator job description wasn't ever updated. Uh, and so it's reflecting, reflecting how things are. But as far as the organizational structure, that is sort of like the, the mayor, because of how the charter is written, comes in and sets up the organizational structure and the way that works best. Um, Administrator Snyder and I have talked about this extensively since like day one, um, about what we were going to do for how the structure was going to work. And the other kind of factor in this is we can't pay for a town admini- administrator who does that function, where there, it's a whole different structure of government, right? The town, in that a town manager government, you're paying like one fifty, I would say, for someone. And they are, they almost, sometimes they have a vote on the board, sometimes they don't. But they don't kind of direct reports to the mayor, they report to the board, but they function sort of independently. Um, and so they have a lot of authority to do things that, um, maybe we don't know about or approve. Um, I have definitely heard some stories from other towns about their, uh, town managers spending money and not telling anyone and they don't have to. Um, so that's, that structure would change this, you know, it's, it's a big change and I don't think we can afford it nor are we set up for it. Um, so I understand kind of the thought process of it, but it wasn't accurate for how we're running the government.
Okay, well, I just never, I, we never, I never personally saw the job description. So I think, um, that would have definitely helped, but seeing it now is, is, it's okay as well.
I was reading through this job description and, uh, what, ten years' experience?
Oh, I thought we should change this.
I.
That was on our list. Yeah, yeah, we, exactly. We wouldn't have hired the people we hired with some other requirement.
This position was created just a few years ago. It was not created, and that was with the charter change. Uh, and that was in twenty twenty, I think.
Twenty tw- March of twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty one. Uh. We, 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 we went with this position because that was, Kyle was doing a lot of it. And, uh, we felt he should at least be paid for it. Uh, he was, he came up through our ranks. What they're paying for where he is going now is what we gave him. And he came up through the deputy clerk. I watched him, he and I've been here just about the same length of time. Uh, I watched him for two years as deputy clerk where he was not given much responsibility at all because they didn't want to give him any. Uh, but he pushed and he, he learned and he, and I watched that go forward. When Tonga came two years later, she saw that potential and she made him chief of staff. He was chief of staff under her for a year and a half. And also Wanda. So, I mean, that's where his experience gained. He gained an awful lot of experience in a very short period of time. And he's like a fun, and he does it well. Uh. So essentially what we hired, we hired this man, but we let him grow with the town. Okay, and we have, what we need to look at is do we have someone here already? We can bring along someone. We were supposed to have the clerk, train the deputy clerk so that if anything were to happen, ideally this would happen. We could move people forward, but that didn't happen either. So a, a series of events have taken place and I think we need to sit down and talk about those again and how we can best avoid them in the future and still move forward with, uh, a lot of the people that we have without fighting anybody along the way.
So I think changing the job descriptions is kind of the most essential thing. Some of the, the job duties and qualifications are just not like reasonable with pay grades. Some of the qualifications, like you said, aren't, our people don't have. So I wanted to have the original job descriptions in here for everyone to look at. We will mark up kind of, and I think we trust Kyle to guide us into how, what works, right? Because we do need a town administrator. Um, in the next few weeks, um, after Kyle is gone, I will be taking on a load of that. Our director of public works will be stepping in and supervising that. Um, and everyone's going to have to step up a little and that's a lot. Uh, it, a lot of how I can do a lot of these meetings and collaborations is because Kyle is handling many of the things that, that get us the sidewalks and the improvements and the grant funding. Uh, and so how long Director Bond and I can hold that up is not going to be forever. Um, and so we do need to hire someone, we do need to hire someone quickly who is competent and qualified. So I think trusting Kyle to set us up with a structure that's going to work and that someone will be willing to come into is reasonable. I don't know what you guys think.
Kyle, I don't really know the position. Well, I think one thing is, two, um, all, all to your, to your point, Commissioner, but also if you think about what do we need as a town with the things that we have in motion right now? I think that's the place that we need to start. Uh, now, my first thought is that we probably can't afford what we need, but we at least need to map out what those needs are and make a determination on where, you know, we can, uh, be, be a little bit more, uh, flexible on that we have. And I think we need to explore whatever avenues there are to meet those needs. At this point, you know, some revision in these job descriptions that we all can. That top of mind too, annexations, getting grant funding. Events with the tools of town that we have. Best to meet that if not. Uh, just to bring up, this is kind of the first high level hire the town's done kind of from scratch since the personal ordinance was introduced. Uh, so this is going to be a support to, uh, at, um, it's department head, which gets the town administrator recall under, um, for votes, approvals to move forward and posting at least, and stuff like this. Bring that up because I kind of like, Commissioner, you mentioned, I kind of stepped up through, so.
Yes.
The job description kind of, so I kind of, yeah, it kind of sets the town up a little bit, um, so it's.
Set the bar very high.
But, well, I didn't mean it that way.
Yes, yes. No, you did set the bar very high and, uh, we appreciate that. And I do, I, I, like I said, I've watched you grow in that position, uh, from sitting over there where we used to sit, sit there and redesign the town when nobody else wanted to.
So, um, that'll be kind of internally, like we do all need to be involved in interview process at the same time. If we commit to a meeting and the interviewee is there and one of us isn't there, we need to be able to move forward with the interview anyway. So I think we probably need to find some time. We did post this job description because like I said, you know, there is only so much capacity in this town. Um, and so we needed the job description out so that we can start interviewing in September. Um, again, we can carry this for so long, but not for, for, I have three children who are school aged. I, I do work full time for the town, um, but you know, we got to re-look.
A meeting or do?
I think it will be better if we, um, it, when all of us are, actually does the interview have to be open or is it going to be closed?
It's usually a closed session, so the board will close call. Depending how, this is for some, for example, uh, the way other places have done it, uh, the board will open, go into closed session and state like, look, we're interviewing candidates and then have a timeframe built in there where it's kind of a point or come into town hall with the board to continue a closed session, you may interview several candidates in that time and then close it out. Do you call it one at a time? Correct, you schedule like fifteen minutes in between or something so that you can discuss amongst yourselves. I'm sure the HR firm will kind of be there with the guiding, uh, creating set of questions and whatnot.
That was my next question. We had, uh, the HR firm during the, uh, hiring of the clerk. The HR firm was involved in that, so I want to know how involved they will be with this one as well. It's a new firm, I don't know them, so I don't, I don't know.
The new firm is doing really well, um, we're pleased with them, yes?
Yeah, they're, uh, I think we threw, we threw one, uh, when they first came in, so.
I don't know if they, I still have them on board.
And, um, the, I thought you were already on board. I don't know, we'll, we'll work that out, but, um, but yes, they'll guide us through the process. But we'll have a closed session and interview everyone and we may have, have more than one. Um, and then, you know, tied, that's going to have to be done carefully.
Uh, where are the, uh, applications being sent?
The HR firm.
HR firm, okay.
Yeah, so they're collecting everything right now and able to answer questions. I know I'm meeting with the, some of it's on them as well because those are their point of contact. Um, but, uh, we can update the job, say like the job description may be updated to the board, possibly both updated at the August town meeting. Yeah, any applicants who have been looking at it kind of know to expect possibly a revised job description.
That brings up another topic, yes, is the, we also have a circuit rider. So this kind of, the circuit rider is, is works, that when we hire them, they'll work for Morningside and Eagle Harbor and a little bit for us. That job description is a partnership between the three, um, towns. So I can't like throw it here and change it and, you know what I mean, it's got, but I think it's pretty solid. Um, and so if someone applies for this position and they're like slightly underqualified, they might be qualified for that other position. Get the approval of those two mayors post that position soon. The two can bounce off each other, um.
This is due, uh, build off that, we got enough money from the state for about one, about a half people. Um, so the town of Marlboro Pike gets a half person, part-time person as a grant rider and then all three towns will share a full-time circuit rider. So obviously some, a bit more time will be devoted to Morningside and Eagle Harbor depending on the fees as well as that person giving, um, some support. Depending on the candidate, what duties they can do. The more help's coming.
We'll be able to approve the contract for the grant rider for the year now that we've started next month. Um, just, so we want public, I mean, we, we should take public comment, I guess. Um, y'all can cry at Kyle after the meeting, though. All right, uh, we have a resident with their hand up online.
Yeah. Uh, Joe Orkley, Old Marlboro Pike. Uh, thank you, Kyle, for all of the work you've done over the past. Um, I don't know if the board wants to set true requirements for the, you know, or qualifications or however it's worded in the, the documents. Because if you ever then have somebody, you have two candidates and one of them technically meets all the requirements, but they just don't seem like a good fit for the town. And then you have someone else who just doesn't quite make them all, but seems like better. You know, if you select that other person, that could, you know, open up the opportunity for a lawsuit saying, well, look, they're not techni- and so I don't know if you want to say something like, you know, preferred or something selecting people. Um, also in the packet, there was an event coordinator position and I think you, so, and, uh, thank.
It's more recent, so I don't think it needs to make, or Kyle, I don't think it needed as many changes.
Yeah, it's a part-time, yeah, so I mean, we can include it in the next round, but.
I just wanted to generally discuss it before we make the changes. Um, all right, so we're going to move on to administrative updates. Do you have anything, that's when you were expecting me to do? General comment. I'm going to do our update first so we can answer Ms. Stevenson. Can we do the update first?
That's, uh, the question about the play in Valley Lane.
Yeah, I know we don't have a. Yeah, I know we don't have a, an answer that any of us like right now, but go ahead.
Uh, so there's a couple of different approaches that the town is actively doing.
Is she here? Okay, sorry.
That is a board, oh, there's a couple of, uh, things that the town's working on, some of the county's working on, um, one thing is, once we kind of get the space, two annexation settled, um, the town's going to reach out to the county to take control of Valley Lane fully, because part of it's the town and I think part of it's.
It's a county.
It's a county and then it goes into private property, so getting that, all that right away, straightened out, so we can make some improvements, widen a little bit, make it safer, um, and possibly some bridges or something. And when the counties are active, um. Uh, the dredging of the western branch is, uh, piece of, is out of water, water flow a lot quicker. I know the town regularly monitors the levels of the branch, um, if you ever have any, um, questions about that, you can reach out, um, or some access and stuff like that, but it's, I don't have any immediate solutions, because flooding is not a quick fix.
It really, yeah, because it dips in there, so it's really like a ridge kind of solution. Um, we can start working with the county now and then they'll be more willing to give it to us maybe.
Did we ever get some lighting down there?
We talked about some LED lighting on a pole, I don't, Director Bond would probably be the best to. Not enough.
That's pitch black if there's no electricity on there, it is dark.
Um, so we'll look into this a little more and I'm sorry we don't have a, I can't see you because there's, I'm sorry we don't have a good solution immediately, um, because it doesn't belong to us, that we are limited, that's why, you know, I had to convince the county to put in sidewalks, because it doesn't belong to us. Um, so either, either we'll make it belong to us or we'll get the county to fix it.
They'll give it to us. So that didn't come with the annexes?
To the, yeah, if you, when you annex an area, the roads still belong to whoever owns the roads in that area. So like the annexation we're doing out to 301 right now, still all roads will belong to either the county, a private entity, or the state.
Unless they're turned over to the town.
Unless they turn them over to us. Um, and like, taking Valley Lane over is one of the things we want to do, the legal stuff going on is part of why that's been delayed. Um, so generally if like a community, their, this community over, um, off 202 is, you know, concerned about their road and certain aspects of it, so one of the discussions is like, if taking it over is what y'all want, then that's what we can do when you come in. That, I know that was important to, um, Commissioner Pinoy, to take the road because it needs work, there's also a lot of historic resources over there, as you know, um, and we need to be kind of respectful, we need to be respectful of that and, and for y'all's safety.
I'd like to speak to you.
Yeah. Um, are there any other administrative updates before we take public comment, general public comment?
On the top.
Um. Correct, um, is there any general public comment, not related to a topic on the? Oh, yeah, sorry. So hold on a second, um, we have someone in the room.
Okay.
Just that Zoom has updated their. AI to, and their AI engine, so you have to. Good questions, cameras in town, so that kind of policy.
Um, you can go ahead with the online comment.
Uh, George Clay, old Marlboro Pike, um, for the person on Valley Lane, um, I think it was Demetrius used to park right at the end of the railroad right of way, or an old train highway and then a hike to his place to be thought, water was coming, so that he wouldn't get trapped in there, but I don't know what that hike is like to your place necessarily. Um, number two, uh, library is back reopened, they have fixed their HVAC, so they have air conditioning again. Um, and then three, where there was discussion at the last regular town meeting about doing a board game night, now the library's back open, I have filed with Lucy this afternoon to try to get every other Wednesday, uh, starting right after the next. Regular town meetings, so we announced that if it gets approved, um, to have board game nights in the town hall from, I think they put in for six to nine. And it would just be drop in and.
All right, um. Can you say that on here? All right, um, so the last thing, um, is that there is a, a cookout in, a cookout on Saturday that is for town residents and committee volunteers, it's not for greater Upper Marlboro, um, so you all are welcome to come to that, from two to six. Um, and then, uh, there is a movie night that everyone's welcome to come to, but we're going to do it here since we're already going to be up here, uh, so we don't have to move around. And that movie is.
The last chapter.
The Last Wish. I've seen it a lot of times. Um, so, yeah, if you have donations, um, for backpack giveaway to town residents, students, um, there is a list online, uh, middle and high school students do need to have clear backpacks. Anything else? All right, is there a motion, oh, we need the next, uh, next meeting agenda. Um, all right, so for the next meeting, if we can just kind of discuss the business part for us, John, if you can list those, uh, Clerk Cosin, please.
Ordinance 2023 dash zero six, seal and logo, ordinance 2023 oh seven, codification, property standards, base three annexation, general government organization, and TA hiring process.
Does anyone have anything to add, um, to that agenda?
And the vendor fees.
Oh, the vendor fees will have to shift over to that.
Exactly.
All right, you know, if you have anything to add, just email me or Kyle as per usual. Great, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Is there a second? Call the roll for us, Clerk Cosin.
Will do, President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Corr.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner Pinoyar.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.